Council is now in session, please stand for the led legions.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you guide us and direct us, Lord, in the midst of all our ups and downs. Lord, we ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. We also ask for a special blessing for the Matanovich family, as well as the Early family on Drucker Street, and all of my constituents who've lost their loved ones in the last month. We ask for prayers and condolences for all of them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick roll call.
Markovitch here. Spitali here. Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henoza.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
All nine present. Number three, we got a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the Hammond City Council, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I will be exceptionally brief, as we try to do every year, go out and just reach out to various elected bodies, make sure that we're available for questions, or that people know some of the things we're doing. I'd like to say a special thanks to your appointee Manny Salazar, who's done a very good job as your appointment. I also wanted to mention today our partnership with Downtown Hammond, and of course, the Mayor's Office of Special Events, which we do a number of things throughout the year, but many of them focused on, of course, our history with A Christmas Story. If you haven't seen it, it mysteries at the museum, each show gets over a million views. It's aired five times focusing on the Dillinger Museum right here in our facility in Hammond. I did hand out for everyone to see our 30 stops in 30 days. It's our 30th anniversary as an organization, and you'll be reading quite a bit about that in the coming months. Couple of things that I updated the mayor on recently, and I wanted to update you on, was the Flick statue that we intend to have mounted and displayed in front of the Visitor Center on one of the flagpoles. If you're aware of the success that has gone on in Valparaiso with their use of Orville Redenbacher on the park bench, and what a picture opportunity and kind of fun that's gone on with that. We're doing the very same thing with the very same studios that have worked in Munster and Gary and Valpo and a number of places in northwest Indiana, and we will have a bronze statue of Flick with his tongue on the flagpole that will be there permanently to celebrate Hammond's part of history in that great movie. Couple of other small items, this year we are poised to hit our 3 millionth visitor to the Visitor Center. We ended the year last year with 92,000 visitors through the door, up significantly since the installation of the highway signs. It only took us 10 years, but we finally got them there. And with that, I would urge all of you to check out our new website at southshorecva.com. We invested quite a bit of time and energy, and we believe it represents not only Hammond exceptionally well, but all of the communities along the South Shore. It's exceptionally brief report for you. If you have questions, I would be happy to entertain them, but my goal today was simply to say hello, thank you for everything you do for us, and not drag your agenda any more than it needs to be. Mr. President, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Number four, reading amendments.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the January 28, 2013 meeting, I so move.
It's motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Number five, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, January 23 through February 6, 2013, for council meeting February 11, beginning with claims dated 1/25/13 and ending with claims dated 2/6/13. Claim number 649 through claim number 903 inclusive, and the resubmission of claim number 5642, for a total of $8,176,543.94, I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Have an addition, claim number 904, Hammond Optimist Youth Sports, $875. It's for team sponsor and banner, and for the World Series Boys and Girls Team that's coming to the city of Hammond, the week of August 9 through the 16, from City Clerk Bob Golick, I so move.
Second.
Amendment by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment to the claims? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amendment to the claims passes 9-0. Now on the claims as written.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
On the resubmission of claim number 5642 for Attorney Berger for $9,395.50, I, when that claim was first pulled, Mr. Berger has not gotten back to me. I had a brief discussion with him tonight, and I'm still not too happy about the submission of the claim, and I'm requesting that the claim be pulled for readjustment, I so move.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich to pull the claims, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails. Clerk Golick roll call vote on the claims as written.
Markovich, yes. Spitali. Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass 9-0. Public hearing, there is none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence for the Hammond City Council, and it says, Dear Councilmembers, I currently invite you to attend the Hammond Public Library African American History Month program on Thursday, February 21, at 6:00 PM at the library. For the first part of our program, we will honor Ms. Willie Mae Dur for her volunteer efforts on behalf of the city of Hammond. Ms. Dur activities have included the Lower Pass More Federated Club Guild as a former library trustee. Following the tribute to Ms. Dur Rose Productions Features Actress Cynthia Maddox portraying five famous African American women in Strong and Song. I do hope that you will be able to attend so that we can recognize our public officials at the program. Please call our public information coordinator, Linda Swazler, at 219-931-5100, extension 310, to confirm your attendance. Sincerely, Renee L. Greenleaf, Library Director.
Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I want to personally thank Hammond High School for acknowledging me this past week for African American Week, where I spoke to students in two classrooms, and I do appreciate them inviting me and having an opportunity to express my concern and my love for the city of Hammond.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 13-05.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance number 13-05, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance submitting ordinance 7685, 828564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, and 9061, also known as Section 36.005B1 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the approved uses of the 60% to be used for infrastructure and public safety in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 13-05.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Kalwinski, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would request that the ordinance be read in its entirety, so everybody could know, and including the council, could know what all these numbers are that were right of law.
Clerk Golick.
Whereas ordinances, all the numbers I previously read, how the Hammond Municipal Code pertains to the expenditure, use, and distribution of Hammond's revenue from riverboat gambling, and whereas, Section 36.005B1 of the Hammond Municipal Code has been amended in previous years, and the definition of infrastructure work and public safety has been expanded to include in Section 36.005B1I dumpsters, and whereas dumpsters placed in neighborhoods primarily are illegally used by contractors and persons outside of Hammond, and do not actually serve the needs of Hammond residents, and whereas the projected gaming revenues in 2013 are expected to be less than in 2012, and conservation of limited infrastructure and public safety resources requires the elimination of expenditures that do not benefit Hammond residents, and whereas, in order to conserve gaming revenue, dumpsters should no longer be considered infrastructure work and public safety in Section 36.005B1 of the Hammond Municipal Code. Section B11 has dumpsters as eliminated.
That concludes the reading of it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
As Clerk Golick read, this ordinance would remove the use of dumpsters from the gaming money under infrastructure. I had a conversation with Gary Gleason, our street commissioner, and it seems when we have our neighborhood cleanups, or whenever the districts have their, the dumpsters in their neighborhoods, the street department gets calls from people who say, oh, when's your neighborhood cleanup? Put me on the list, and they give the number. When the street department calls the number back, it's a contractor. As everyone knows, we here in the city of Hammond are battling illegal rehabs in our city, and that, the dumpsters is a way that the contractors who are not getting permits, who are not being, having their work inspected, it's a way for them to dump their materials, and nobody keep up with them. If we eliminate the dumpsters, and somebody is doing rehab in a, at a home, and they put the material in the alley, when the street department goes down the alley to pick up, as they do weekly, the street department will then call code enforcement and say, there's a bunch of drywall, there's a bunch of two-by-fours, there's a bathroom sink, a shower, whatever it may be, in the alley. So this is just a way to curb some of the illegal rehabs that are going on in the city.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Normally, when I bring an issue or discussion for ordinance for passage, we have a committee meeting. We didn't have one on this particular ordinance, and so I'm wondering where do we go from here, because normally we have a committee meeting addressing ordinances. And I want to just add on, I totally disagree with anyone that's abusing or have abused the system. I'm totally against, certainly the efforts of putting those particular dumpsters in the community was to help my constituents in regards to clean up the community and not abusing the system.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, since we didn't have a committee meeting, I know there's a number of things that we could have done. We could eliminate the, eliminated the number of dumpsters to a certain amount. We could have limited when the dumpsters are to be put out there in certain months, and make sure it's not done right before an election. We could have also done, you know, for something like this, you abuse it, you lose it, I probably had at least 40 to 50, maybe even more, of my constituents that liked the dumpsters. And of course, what's going to happen now, now the street department's going to have to pick up all this stuff, and also, we're going to, now we're going to have illegal dumping in the empty lots, and who's going to clean it up? City of Hammond is going to clean it up. So I think if we just watch what we're doing, and limit the amount of dumpsters that we have, and maybe put them only in certain places where they're seen a lot better, and not hidden anywhere, I think there's nothing wrong with it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I certainly agree in terms of placing the amount, I mean, that's one way to look at addressing the issue. Certainly, I, you know, I feel for Councilwoman Vanez in terms of abusing the system, and whoever abused it, you know, it only hurts the community in their efforts of making our neighborhood and our city a better and safer place, but, you know, what do you do in this situation? And I don't feel it's necessary to totally delete them from the whole process in terms of that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for letting me interject on this. I remember when we passed this ordinance originally, I thought, wow, this is weird, we're really changing an ordinance, something that's permanent in the city of Hammond, and adding the line garbage cans to it. But I signed it, I take responsibility. I thought it was silly at the time that we did that, I really did, and we passed it, and obviously, things happened that we didn't like as a city, and I support Councilwoman Vanez's attempt to clean up our ordinance. I think it needs to be cleaned up. I promise, as your mayor, to work with, very closely with the district council people, and the at-large council people, if there's an issue in your district, if this is to pass, I promise you, whoever it is, it doesn't matter, I'm the mayor of the whole city, we will work closely with you, okay? I think this is going to clean it up, and, quite frankly, and the abuse of gaming money, which is what we're trying to do. So, I appreciate Councilwoman Vanez floating this, I understand the district council people's reluctance, and I want you to know, regardless of who you are, I'll work with you, we'll work with you, okay? My street commissioner is very good about taking off phone calls, and we'll work with you to help you clean up your districts, and I think we can do it without putting 20, 20 garbage cans in a district, you know, some of them with political signs on them and stuff like that, I think we just need to clean that whole thing up, so.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Well, let me be first to say that there were no political signs on no dumpsters in my particular district, and certainly, the purpose of it was to simply make the community a better place to clean it up.
I know, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Councilman Higgs, I agree, and I just think it's going to make it safer, I mean, just make it cleaner. I think that, when you look at, Councilman Higgs, when you spend money typically, if you're going to do a street, you're going to spend a million dollars, a million five, something big like that, right? And we work with you, and we work together, and we get the projects done that you need to get done. It seems weird that, when you, when you're talking about the level of money, you're talking about usually a lighting project, a park project, you're spending six figures on a project like that, and then when you're talking about dumpsters, it's like, okay, plus, I want to spend $1,500 on a dumpster, it's like, Councilman Higgs, I think, you know, I think you focus, as, in my opinion, I think the district council people should focus on the big projects, and if you have things like this, we have staff there that could help you, and we will. I think that this is way cleaner, personally, and I, and I hope it passes, I really do, but I want you to know, if it, if it does pass, I don't care who it is, I pride myself on trying to work as best as I can with the council, and I realize sometimes, politics gets in the way, but I want you to know, I mean, we're all in this together, I live in the same city you live in, it doesn't matter if it's the third, or the sixth, or the fourth, I live in the same city you do, so, and we all want to have a clean city.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just one other thing, I, and you know, there's never been a political purpose, I don't need to put dumpsters and put my name on them to run for office, I simply know what to do, knock on their door and get the constituents to their polls on Election Day. So that's never been my motivation for having the dumpsters placed there. The purpose was simply to make the community and my district cleaner.
Mr. President. One last comment for me. It's an ordinance, this is something that 50 years from now, you know, hopefully, we still have gaming money 50 years from now, and there's still a pot of revenue to split up 50 years from now, and if there is, I hope we have a nice, clean ordinance, because that's how it should be, instead of talking about $1,500 for a dumpster here and there, that's just sort of, you know, that's, seems a little too detailed.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
It seems that there was a committee meeting scheduled for February 25, I was a little bit premature, so I rescind my motion.
And I'll rescind my second.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so it goes back into council as a whole.
They need to rescind their second.
They did. Councilman Kalwinski rescinded his second. Okay, moving on. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 13-06, sponsored by Councilwoman Spitali, and ordinance appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Hammond Economic Development Marketing.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move that ordinance 13-06, move through first and second reading, through to council as a whole, with the public hearing set for March 11. Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion put in council as a whole.
Senator Opinker, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Clerk Golick, resolutions.
Resolution number 13R-03, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, a resolution reappointing Thomas J. Poplava to the Hammond Port Authority.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of 13R-03. Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
As you heard, Mr. Poplava was in our caucus meeting, and spoke very eloquently about his background, his experience, his passion for giving back to the community, and I'm honored to be able to sponsor this reappointment for Mr. Poplava.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I could have the mayor just speak in terms of, and just give me some knowledge of how he feels about this particular gentleman, I don't know very much about him, I did speak to him, though.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I have known Tom Poplava since I took over as mayor, not much before that, but I think he's an excellent person, I think he's a great representative of the first district, Robert Sell in particular, I think he's a great person, he's a great family man, and he's done a great job as a member of the Port Authority, as far as, he's also the representative of the Gary Diocese on the College Bound Exceptions Committee, which is not a glamorous position, it's a lot of work, actually, and a lot of people make that out like it's a glamorous spot, let me tell you, it's a lot of details, so, and he's done an excellent job. He's been on College Bound Exceptions Committee since the beginning.
Just one other question, is he good as Bobby Lindy?
Bobby Lindy's really good, I mean, no offense to Mr. Poplava, but Bobby's really good at his job, we're lucky to have a guy like Bobby, and Mr. Poplava, so.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Resolution 13R-03 passes 9-0.
Senator Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
All right, moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
House Bill 1313, I would like, as it relates to the rental registration, to send our opposing that particular bill downstate, I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Kalwinski, to send a letter down for House Bill, was that 528?
1313.
1313. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to the Inspections Department to see if they can take care of a illegal dumping of huge amounts of tires over at a abandoned building at approximately 6513 Kennedy Avenue, former tires R.S. building that has a wagon full of tires, and it seems like everybody's just dumping their tires there, and it's been there for over a year already.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henoza, second by Councilman Higgs, to send a letter on illegal tire dumping, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like the letter sent to the Board of Works in terms of a light being out in the number 67, 750, and 1100 block of Cleveland, just across the street from 940 Cleveland, I so move. 1100 block of Cleveland, I'm sorry, it's the light number 67 over 750, and it's one on 1100 block of Cleveland, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, to send a letter on a couple lighting issues, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Going back to that 6513 Kennedy, I'm aware of that, and like Chico said, that stuff's been sitting there, but I think probably code enforcement should go over there, find out who owns the property, and cite them and clean up the place. The tires are being thrown, somebody owns the property, somebody's maybe paying taxes or whatever, so why should the city pick up the tab on that, but cite them and find out who owns the property and have them clean it up, and, you know, dispose them, because what are we paying, probably three to five dollars apiece now for disposal of a tire? Why should we pick up the tab? And they've been sitting there probably a year, in fact, you know, you can see it when you drive down Kennedy, so I agree with them, but I think we ought to look at it in that respect to see if we can recoup some of our money for the cleanup. I'd say put a dumpster there, but that's a sore subject right now.
So is that a motion for a letter, Councilman Markovich?
Well, in addition to that letter that we're sending.
Okay.
You know, just add some language to that, to have the city or code enforcement look at, see who owns it, maybe we can get them to clean it up.
And or?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
I believe that's a procedure they already have, that they get you to go clean it up, you got to go to court a certain day, if it's not cleaned up, they'll clean it up for you, and then they'll put the lien on your property. And Mr. Tom Daberton, I send you a picture of this pile of tires.
Mr. Daberton.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that is a procedure, and obviously, now that we have the information, you know, we encourage any council member, though, you know, just like the comment about the lights, Councilman Higgs, if you want to expedite it, instead of sending a letter to the Board of Works, just call the Engineering Department, they actually have a great relationship with NIPSCO, and you can get those lights fixed a whole lot faster than, by the time that letter shows up, they'd already have those lights fixed, so if you just contact the Engineering Department, they'll get that taken care of. But Councilman Henoza, yeah, you're absolutely correct, we'll cite it, we'll get it cleaned up, and if necessary, we'll put it on taxes, so.
I, I just want to respond to that, I do contact them, but I always like to have everything in record.
Have you contacted them? Go first. Okay.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, as we discussed in caucus, I would like a letter sent downstate regarding Senate Bill 528, and I would like that from the entire council.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spitali, to have a letter sent on Senate Bill 528, all those in favor?
Yeah, what is 528?
528 is the.
But nobody out there knows what 528 is.
You want to explain that, Councilwoman Vanez?
Can I ask Mr. Daberton to come to the microphone, please, give a more thorough explanation than I could?
We're actually with the picture, but we'll get that tomorrow, we'll get that. And Councilman Henoza, I'm sorry.
528.
528.
Downstate Bill for gaming.
Really don't know a whole lot more than what the mayor had mentioned, you know, obviously, it would have a significant impact on, on the city, so. Yeah, Bobby, I think, could probably explain a little bit more, but basically.
Controler Bobby Lindy to the podium, please.
Because I think you know a little bit more about this one than I do, so.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. Currently, Senate Bill 528 is a bill that would eliminate the admissions tax. tax that wagering facilities in the state of Indiana currently pay to municipalities. The wagering tax, excuse me, the admissions tax would be replaced with what's called a supplemental wagering tax. And so for most communities, what would happen would be, there would be a one-for-one offset of admissions tax going away and supplemental wagering tax coming in. The issue at hand is whether the supplemental wagering tax is going to be classified in the same manner that the current wagering tax is. And the reason that that's a concern is because our current wagering taxes are capped at thirteen million dollars and some change, meaning that part of the gaming monies that we receive can never be greater than thirteen million dollars. Now, we reach that cap usually within about seven months of the year. Since we've gotten a new boat, it generates sufficient wagering revenues such that we hit our cap in about seven months. So we've hit this thirteen million dollar cap, and we're, the state is considering creating these new offsetting revenues called supplemental wagering taxes. And the question at hand that isn't answered in Indianapolis yet is whether these new supplemental wagering taxes will fall within the cap or will be considered revenues outside of the cap. If they're considered revenues outside the cap, the city will be made whole, because it'll, it'll continue to be a one-for-one offset of admissions to wagering taxes. If they're not, or if they are considered to fall underneath that cap and they're considered in the, in the same vein as our regular wagering tax, because we already hit the cap, we will not see any of these renamed revenues, which amount to roughly four point five million dollars a year. So this would be an approximate twelve to fifteen percent loss in gaming revenue for the city of Hammond, simply by renaming one of these taxes and thus having, having it adhere to a cap.
It is going to hurt us.
It will hurt us.
Want to point that, point out that revenues are already here.
Sure. You guys that have been on the council for, you know, more than, you know, two handfuls of years have seen our gaming revenues, and you, you've seen them peak in two thousand eight, you've seen them decline since then. And in the declining economic times that we have right now in regards to our gaming revenues, this certainly would not be, you know, a preferable time to take another fifteen percent bite out of the monies that we use for our infrastructure improvements for our hundred and twenty-five-year-old city. So that being said, we're working very diligently through lobbyists in Indianapolis to ensure that if and when this legislation passes, the nuances that are related to naming this different, naming this revenue or renaming this revenue, because that's basically what it's doing, it's just renaming admissions tax. When it's renamed, rename it something that isn't going to create this capping issue by calling it the wagering tax. Doesn't matter what you call it. Call it the Mike Pence, you know, revenue. It doesn't matter, just don't call it something that's going to relate to another statute that's going to cap it. So, you know, I would urge the council to, in your, in your letter, if that's what you're, you're looking to do, is write a letter to, to our, our delegation to, to please let them know that, you know, at this point, taking another fifteen percent of our gaming revenue, you know, that we're counting on to make critical infrastructure improvements in our aging city, is going to be detrimental to the, the health and safety of our residents.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion to include those words in the language that was presented to us from our city control. I so move.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to announce a couple of crime watch meetings coming up on Thursday, which happens to be Valentine's Day, so it's a great way to take your honey out for a meeting and then go for a sandwich. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watches meeting at six thirty P M. at Calumet College. At their meeting, they are collecting items for our soldiers, such as playing cards, tube socks, toothpaste, toothbrushes. Your donations would be welcome. On Tuesday, February nineteenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet six thirty P M. at the Ophelia Steen Center. And on Thursday, February twenty-first, seven P M., the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at seven P M. And also at seven P M., the Husville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
Well, it's not even spring yet, and the foreclosed home signs are sprouting on the parkways in the fourth district, and I also saw some in some other districts. I won't spend a lot of time on it, there's already an ordinance about what goes on the parkways, and foreclosed home signs are not one of those things. I would encourage, without putting more work on the departments, the street department and everything, for people to call, take these signs out of the parkway if it's in front of your house or on a corner, that's city property. Foreclosed homes are a national problem, they're, you know, they're a problem in Hammond, we know that, but we don't need to be reminded of them on every street corner when the house is not there. If it's in the front yard of the house, I don't have a problem with that, like normal relity signs, but they're putting them anywhere, on parkways, on corners, on city property. So I would encourage you to pull them up. I called the number this morning, and it's something like, are you crazy relity or something? I, I didn't even get the name. But in the, in the message, I got a message, and they said, you're crazy if you don't take advantage of these homes. Well, you know, be that as it may, that, that's fine. But I also told the lady who I was and that, you know, we really need to keep those off of the parkways, that's city property, have them in front of the house.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Just to piggyback on that, Councilman Emerson, we do have an ordinance here in the city of Hammond that prohibits posting of signs on any city property. That means telephone poles, light poles, parkways. I regularly get calls from people, particularly during the summer, about the garage sale signs. I take them down, I call the person or write them a letter. During the winter, there are a lot of health insurance signs, all sorts of signs posted all over. And, and what happens is, these companies hire outside contractors who put the signs up wherever. And, and I do call them and tell them we have an ordinance against it. So just so everyone knows, it is illegal in the city of Hammond to post signs on city property and parkways, and especially when the garage sales begin in the spring, we will begin to go after these signs, and I'll drive around and pull them down. So thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Daberton?
I, I actually just sent, just sent a message to our Public Works Department HUD and asked them, starting tomorrow, to go around and pull anything that they see on the parkways.
Uh-oh.
So we'll get all those signs.
Thank you.
They've done a great job.
They've done it in the past, but like you said, usually, this, this problem occurs in the spring, but because of the mild winter, they're doing it now, so we're not blowing a lot of snow, they can go around and start pulling them tomorrow morning.
Councilman Spitali.
All signs, all signs on the parkways.
Uh-oh.
Those foreclosure signs also are very detrimental to our N S P program that we buy ourselves, the city, through HUD, foreclosed vacant properties, so it would be nice to get those all taken down, and everybody work together, because it will hurt the city. It already has.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Over the weekend, and I'm talking as a parent, they have what they call Little City by the Lake called Whiting, and I guess you could say Hammond's the bigger city by the lake. But over the weekend, Whiting girls won the girl's sectional out at the River Forest High School. As a parent, my daughter plays on there, and during the past season, they played Bishop Knoll for the third time. They lost the first time in overtime to them. The second time, they lost by four points. But the third time, like the newspaper article said, third time's a charm, and that's the one that counts. And the girls from Whiting, they beat Bishop Knoll, I believe it was sixty-five to forty-seven by eighteen, seventeen, eighteen points, and they're going to be playing at the Rochester Regional next Saturday. And I'm just tooting the horn for Whiting and my daughter, and just letting it know and new and unfinished business, and I'm sure I've got a follow-up coming up now.
Yeah, well.
Oh, you, you go ahead, I'll.
I will, I, I will mention, the fact is, is that Councilman Markovich, his daughter played a great game, in fact, probably the best game I've ever seen her play, and she's a good player, but the fact is, is that although the school is in Whiting, there are a number of Hammond students on that team. Let's see, Serena Huss, starting all the way down in the fourth district, is on that team. She lives on Riverside Drive. There are, let's see, Brianna Blackwell.
His daughter.
I'm sorry?
She plays for Bishop Knoll.
Bishop Knoll, okay.
Yeah, wrong team. Abby Bondi, Lauren Markovich, Bob, who am I leaving out?
Maszakowski.
Maszakowski, there's, there's about half that team is from, from Hammond. And not just Robert Sill in North Hammond. Like I said, we have them as far south as, as the fourth district, so they, they do deserve a lot of support. They're going to, they're going to the regional Saturday. I have to say, I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen Bob that animated and that proud that I can remember, so, you know, he, he certainly deserved to be proud.
All right, any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Mr. George Stoya.
Hello.
You're it.
I read in the paper that they had a, some legislation pending, or at least proposed, I don't know yet, that's what I'm trying to, some clarification, if you guys knew anything about it, concerning the landlord fee. I, as I understood it, was initially, we had home rule on that, and, you know, you had all the litigation on it, and now the state is considering, I guess, I don't know if they're abolishing it, or are they going to restrict how much we can charge? In any event, what concerns me is, again, as I understand it, it's funding code enforcement. And to me, code enforcement is very important and the front line of defense in this city for a lot of things, and especially maintaining the quality of our infrastructure, et cetera. And I was wondering if you guys could clarify anything on that, which, you know, I mean, I wasn't able to make it inside there today to ask about it, so.
I think we are just disgusted a little bit. Well, we sent the letter, if I can.
Exactly, that was a House Bill thirteen thirteen. It is being investigated, right? Opposing it.
And we are against it, and if I have to drive to Indianapolis, I will. Totally against it. It's going to hurt Hammond tremendously.